Okay, it is six o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. I'll stay after the budget leaders. Good evening, this is the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of America, which stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty and Justice are our. Start with recognitions.
All right, welcome back from vacation. I don't have any recognitions tonight, but I do have an announcement that there will be no school tomorrow. You should receive that one call, but to all the students who are watching at home, I'm sure there's hundreds.
Hadn't checked our membership ratings, but assuming they're. So approval of minutes, we're approving the regular meeting minutes from Monday, January 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's January meeting.
Second.
All right, and any discussion on this? I know it all been here. No? All in favor of approving the minutes from January 30th, 2023? Public participation. Do you have any public participation today? Moving on then. Student representative report, Olivia.
So for our past information, we just recently finished up with the conclusion of the basketball season. Our basketball concessions that we do every year as a way to raise funds for our council while supporting the basketball teams. We recently finished working on our excellence book and putting together our award nominations for this year. Not all of you may know, but last year at our annual conference, we received a top 10 project award for our unity week, and we hope to achieve that this year as well, as well as many other awards. The excellence book is created by a historian, which is me, with the help from the student other student council members who will be joining us at Hyannis next week, actually. And the excellence book is kind of just a way for us to showcase what we have achieved and as a council, as well as like a school as a whole, and it will be displayed at our Hyannis conference next week. Our annual unity week was in February. This was a week-long event where we helped support and create a stronger sense of community and unification in our school. We showed support for the LGBTQ+ community and we sold T-shirts to bring awareness to mental health and to help end those stigmas. We also did a bunch of spirit days, like one of our, the students' favorites is put bowling to bed day, where it's our way to include a pajama day in our spirit week while still including that in our unity week. We participated in school counselors week. For school counselors week, we encouraged students to make cards for the counselors and to stop in to say hi. We also put in announcements thanking them for all that they do, and at the end of the week, we brought them gifts from student councils, our way of saying thank you. For upcoming information, we have our Hyannis conference, which is next week. It is a three-night, four-day conference from March 8th to the 11th. We're going down Tuesday night for an extra bonding time and to skip all the crowds from the big schools coming in all at once. We have six members going. It's myself, Jake Standrovich, Shannon Toomey, Brean Hutchinson, Sophia Jean Grande, and Mary McGeechee. And at this conference, we learned many valuable leadership skills and meet many new people from other councils. We participate in polar plunge for Special Olympics. Our next conference after that is just a one-night conference in West Boylston, and it is on April 13th. We have our clam box fundraiser, which because of the storm expected for tomorrow, those coupons, if you show the flyer at the clam box, tonight, tomorrow, or Wednesday, they will be accepted from 11:30 to 8:30. And all funds raised are going towards our Hyannis conference. And then, as always, we have our social media accounts, Instagram and Facebook are at MB StuCo. And just a reminder that all our student council meetings are open to the school and community. Our meetings are typically every other Monday in here, so please feel free to join us if you have any concerns or questions or just want to come hang out.
Olivia, the coupons, the listeners at home or viewers at home, where can they obtain those coupons to bring to the clam box?
So it's just a flyer. If you just take a screenshot of it, it's on our Instagram and Facebook page. And if you just take a screenshot of it or even just show them the post, 10% of whatever your meal was for that night goes towards our Hyannis trips.
Did you plug your social medias?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Before then.
I did see, I think I saw a post on some of the other town pages to cross.
Yeah, it's, everyone's kind of posting it and resharing it.
Done.
Yep, so did you, were able to talk to anybody about the childcare during the school committee meetings?
So we haven't had many meetings since then. We've been discussing it, but nothing final has been made for decisions.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Olivia, as always. You guys are very busy. School committee reports. Do we have any school committee reports? Okay. Financial reports.
So I, I will be honest, I did not include the financial reports in this month's packet. When I stress together, I'm basically not part of it. So what you have been typically receiving has just been awards you can sign off. I will say however, that just past week, we did have Cindy Schofield start the new business manager, and so what my goal is, is to do for the next three or four meetings this fiscal year is to start giving you more of an update on where we are with the budget spending. So a real, I'll update on the budget as far as where we are, where our funds are going, more than just assigned warrants and warrants.
We need to work towards reconciling it as we get close to the end of the year too.
Right. Yep, I know that's what. And that's where we work towards. I have a spot now, we can start to do that.
Okay. All right, superintendent's report. So part of this is the budget presentation, which we've looked at. The goal for tonight is a kind of a high-level look at what we're facing with the budget coming up and what we've, there's a couple of different paths we can take after this presentation. I think the best, and we've already reached out to by the finance committee, they'd like a joint meeting, so we're working on setting that up. For the purposes of tonight, we have more granular, there's a lot of information in here, I'm sure you guys have seen, this is quite the packet we've gotten. And I think the best way to handle this for tonight, Mr. Reportman does his presentation, we can reach out to him with more specific questions, and we can get that compiled into an easy-to-read kind of follow-up to us all that we can then bring with us and address with the finance committee, so we have that information in, rather than spend four hours tonight talking about that.
Do you have the timeline of when it needs to be down to the town?
Is as soon as we can get it to them, what they want, it's supposed to be by, like a month ago?
What I was told by March.
It's by, yeah, March. March 1st or March 15th?
I know last year, last year's timeline said March 22nd.
Okay. If we just, because I, when's our next meeting? Because we need to vote on this, so. It's generally, last year we voted on at the March meeting to approve it after we sorted out various things. I think in the meantime.
March 20th would be our next meeting.
Okay. In the meantime, I think it helps us to have a meeting with the finance committee before that.
No, I don't disagree, I just, I think, yeah, before we, so I'm gonna have questions, but I'm gonna have questions based off of what we currently spent and what we have, I know what we have budget currently spent and what we project the spending to be. So I need to see those two things before I can really have, I mean, I get the whole special ed thing, I read that, I get that, I understand that, but I do need to see the other line items that we have in the budget against what we've spent, and I know that you, now, I, I know you're working towards that. I'm just saying that unless I know what we've already spent and what we plan to spend going forward, you know, there's always one somewhere, and I just want to know where that is and what we're doing, you know, so if we can get something sooner or later, I would be happy. And before we even get started, I want to say thank you for this, because this obviously shows a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous amount of hours at this, so I appreciate all of this, but I'm gonna need that, here personally, I'm gonna need that before.
Floor reserved.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you. I know most of you received this last week. It's a pretty hefty binder, a few different parts. You have kind of the open narrative, which is a little more detailed, kind of explanation of what we got and how we got to this FY24 budget. And then you also have a copy of tonight's presentation, which has been a few minor edits which we'll see tonight. And then the remaining bulk of the binder was the individual Excel spreadsheet as well for all the departments, the two schools, specialized, transportation, athletics, and so on and so forth. So as Mr. Wild says, a lot to digest here. I don't expect everybody to have all their interests, all their questions answered tonight, but this is the start of what will be a lengthy conversation. I know that this process will probably take us to the end of the year before we go to this budget to be finalized, and there are probably many versions of this budget before it is finalized. But this is our starting point, and kind of what the goal is for tonight, just an overview, is to present kind of our first draft of FY24 recommended budget, and then to receive feedback and guidance from all of you on kind of what our next step should be. And I know we have a timeline that we need to meet, we have to meet with finance, we have to meet with the SLU board, we have to present this, or have to answer questions at some point at town meeting. But like I said, this process will probably continue right through June when we have a final version of this FY24 budget. So some of our overarching guiding principles for this development of this budget, and these are the things that I always went back to, I always went back to.
Can I interrupt you for a second? It's in section two of the binder, if you have a binder and you want to follow along with the presentation you guys have on board, because we can't see it because it's behind us.
No, thank you. Anybody have it, because I want to go too fast, you know?
There's no, if binder breaks, so if you go to the second section, yeah.
The first section, first section of the budget binder is the more of the narrative, where the second part is this presentation outline. So I broke it down into four guiding principles for tonight's presentation, and the first two is ensure that the school department budget is accurate, transparent, easy to understand, and based on the needs of our students. So I hope that I met some of that criteria for you all. I wanted to kind of break it down as succinctly as possible to kind of give you an overview, but also some of those details that I know you've been wanting to see as we go through this process. I involved the entire administrative team in this process, so that means the two building principals, our director of special education, our IT director, our facilities director, our athletic director, so they, they all had a voice in building this budget. And they, before they came to me, before we met on multiple occasions, they went to their staff, they talked to their teachers, they talked to their employees, their custodians, they talked about what they need to make this budget as robust and as successful as possible. We need to think about preservation and of resources is a top, is a top priority, but we also need to think about the growth and improvement of North Brookfield Public Schools. And we need to preserve what we have, but we need to constantly be thinking about how we can grow and how we can improve. So this budget reflects some of that as well. And then we will discuss kind of our reliance on our offsets, our Esther funding, which will be going away over the next year, and what we're gonna do as a district, as a community kind of to, to prepare for some of that. And those are some tough conversations that we need to have both now and down the road. So I will kind of jump right into it, and this next graph, as you see, is our FY23 budget, which was just under $7.8 million. Our recommended FY24 budget is 9.16, with an increase of $1.36 million. That is a total increase of 7.44%. Seven, excuse me, 17.44%. I will also add, which is not on this slide, which I was sharing with Mr. Canada before we started tonight, that we received our chapter 70 money, or our number for this coming fiscal year, which is roughly at 4.9 million, last year was at 4.5. So there's an increase, a slight increase, more than a slight increase, of our town receiving for FY24. It's about a $370,000 increase, which will help with this, some of this offset. So this next slide, we break it down into, I'm gonna show you this in a couple of different ways, because I know people look at this in different ways, and I want it to be as accurate and as user-friendly as possible. But we're looking at, there's three major drivers of this budget of why the increases aren't there. One is salaries, the other is contracted service and special ed tuition, and the other is transportation. Last June, we negotiated good faith with our teachers, and the teachers' contract, there was a 2% increase for FY24. So you're looking at that first row across, you're looking at FY23 at $4.3 million for teacher salaries, and we're looking at a projection, or, excuse me, a new number of $4.6 for FY24. That is an increase, is an increase from 101 full-time employees to 103. And we're gonna talk about those two additions later in this presentation. So that's a 7% difference between FY23 and FY24. Special ed, tuition, and contracted services, this is our biggest increase, this jumped from 809 to 1.59 million dollars, so that's a $787,000 increase, or it's a 97% increase for that line item. And part of the reason for this was that beginning, or during this time last year, the elementary school, at the elementary school level, we did not budget any outer district tuitions. So obviously, before the start of the school year, that changed, we had numbers that changed that, so that is part of that, that increase. But we're gonna talk about this in great detail later too, is that there also was a 14% increase across the state that's gonna affect every school district across the Commonwealth with our district placements. So when we sent a student out to receive the services they deserve, that cost has increased by 14%, okay? And then transportation, we saw an increase from 745 to 996, that's an increase of a little over $4 million, that's 33, 33% increase over FY23, FY24. Now, as you may recall, we eliminated one bus, but even with doing that, there's a 6% increase in transportation costs, and that bid process is ongoing right now. But that was from talking with our current bus company and just kind of getting a lay of the land with how this is looking, we're looking at a 30% increase over the next five years of transportation. And that includes our regular rate transportation, that includes athletics, that includes special ed transportation, so that's across the board. So that's a big number that we can do without. So those are the three big drivers. That's kind of spelled out several different ways throughout this presentation. But the bottom part of this slide, you're gonna see that salaries account for just under 50% of the total budget and 21% of the total increase. So another way of looking at this, the budget increase in context, I fully understand or recognize that this is higher than desirable, but the three of the factors that are at our control which impacted the FY24 budget are special ed tuition, transportation costs, and salaries. So this next graphic kind of gives you a quick peek, and it's not the full story, but it's one way, when I was building this budget, building a budget for next year, of how I start and how I look at this. So I, I take the FY23 budget to start, and I start plugging in, like I said, those big, those big parts of the budget. So we're looking at salaries, special ed, facilities, technology, contracted services, and I, and I look at what those additions, or how are they gonna affect the budget, both incrementally, cumulatively, and also just as standalone piece of the budget. So this graphic is to kind of show you kind of my thought process when I put this together. So again, the budget increase in context. So together, the increase of special ed, two special education tuition, transportation is to average from the FY24 budget, total $1.32 million, which accounts, which accounts for 95%, 97% of the total budget increase of 17.4%. So those three things, again, are the three budget, major budget drivers that we're gathering for next year. So as I started to talk about a little bit, I'm gonna get a little more in detail with this, you know, why does special education tuition budget increase by such a large amount? Okay? One, which I, which I already mentioned, the Operational Service Division, or OSD, sent a memo to all school superintendents back on October 1st with that 14% inflation rate, that detailed discussion about the 14%. What it comes down to is that, like school districts across the Commonwealth, across the country for that matter, they're having a difficult time hiring high-qualified employees. So they're having to increase their salary offerings, they're having to give signing bonuses, and what's happening essentially is those costs are being referred to school districts. So we are, are taking in a lot of ways the brunt of those additional costs. So this is affecting every public school across the state and most likely across the country right now. When you think about special ed increment increases over previous years, it's usually 1% to 2%. So to go from 1% to 2% to 14% is a huge increase, okay? We also, you know, we talked about, I mentioned this briefly already, is that we, we did not, during this time last year, in this process, we did not have a number for our elementary school on addition placements. We had zero, okay? That did not hold true. We had students who had placements after this budget was finalized, that we have to make sure that those students received the education they deserve. So that number increased almost immediately over the summertime when we had those students who were then put into those programs. So those students are still in these programs, so they are now built in the budget for this FY24 budget. Additionally, we have one additional student who are projected will need addition placement for the FY24 school, so that's an increased cost. So this next page is, again, another breakdown, if you're approval, of the special ed, addition placements. Like I said, we went from nine to 10, from FY23 to FY24. This breaks down kind of the costs from year to year with collaborative, private day, and residential. And you look at the grand total from 1.3 million to 1.47 million, which is an increase of $145,000. But then you also see the transportation cost, which increased dramatically as well. So the cumulative total from FY23 to FY24 is 1.47 to 1.97. So we have a huge increase, over half a million dollars of increase, just with these, these two parts of special ed.
So can I just jump in with a question?
Sure.
I was talking about this earlier, so the collaborative, you're projecting one student to two students, but you're only projecting a, what, 12, 13 thousand dollar increase? That's accurate?
It's accurate, yeah.
Okay. I just, I figured one is 109, and two is 218. Okay, just want to make sure.
What I'll say is, you know, and I'll touch upon this.
I'm good, I just want to make sure that.
Yep, I'll touch upon this later too, is that we don't have any parts of the budget, and we can't, you know, we can't have.
No, I know that, no, I, no, I understand that, I just want to make sure that it just seemed, you know, who paying that much for money, it seemed like they paid a double money, if they're not, that's fine, I'm good, thank you.
So the next graphic I want to share with you, and this is, this is a very important piece as well, this is kind of highlighting the revenue offsets from FY23 to FY24. As you can see, we have used, last year and this year, it's over $1.3 million of offsets to, to, to bring to North Brookfield Public Schools a budget. And I would say it's typical for school districts to use offsets, but we've had to really kind of be creative this year as well, to kind of look at how we can, we can bring all of our, some of our new program to our students with the money that we have. But you can see a couple of major things here, and I won't go through all these, these items individually, but we're gonna talk about Esther in a minute, so I'll hold off on that. But we have a, the school choice number, for example, which is in the middle of this graphic. You see 409,000 was allocated for FY23. We're projecting around $200,000 for FY24. That number may come in higher, but that's a projection right now. So that's a decrease, okay? That money right now, or will be going towards paying for some salaries, okay? What I've done is I've looked at these offsets of big, big groups, big chunks. Last year, during the FY23 budget process, they were spread over all parts of the budget. We've tried to really put these where they've been, where they would be most impactful, and salaries is one of those places. Salaries, and some of our, some of our special ed tuitions as well. We have a student gift this year, which is a new kind of offset that we have not used in the past. We are using that $24,000 to pay for our two math curriculums that we are purchasing for next year. This year, we piloted over three different programs, we kind of landed on two, with the help of our math coach and our, our math teachers throughout the whole district. We found two curriculums that we really think are the best fit for our students right now, and we feel that it's timely, based on, on different scores from NCAS, from our benchmark assessments, that we really need to put, especially on this is our math instruction, so that's where that money is going. We have, and we still receive, two grants for rural school aid. As you can see, some of that money, there's 11,000 which is carrying over, but that money is being used to offset some of our technology costs. We also have, continue, we continue to receive our 240 and 262 grants, which are dedicated to special education, and they'll be going to offset some of our spare salary costs and some supplies for our special ed department, our special ed students. And we're gonna talk about special ed circuit breaker as well, and that, there's more detailed kind of information in your budget narrative about circuit breaker. But what that essentially is, is a way for the state to offset our increasing special ed costs. Currently, it's around 70%. They're hoping, and was at a meeting just a week and a half ago, where they taught, we talked about, these are our local politicians, about increasing that number from 70 to 90%. Because districts like North Brookfield and others, you know, that are kind of in the same situation, we're seeing these increased costs, which we did not budget for, so we need that support from the state to reimburse this for several funds. That goes to the instruction and the transportation. Did you have a question, Tony?
Yes, I was wondering, what changed, what's the difference in your expectation with the school choice? Like what made that change? You just wanna, you know, don't want to cut your chickens before the hatch, or?
Well, you want to be careful with, so it's no mystery that we've, our, our school choice number is upside down, we've lost more kids than we're seeing here, okay? So some of this money that we use this year for school choice is money we already had in our accounts, and that number is greatly depleted, okay? And so what I don't want to do is overplay that number. So that we have a number of students who are school choicing, and, you know, we have to report that to the state every, by October 1, and that number is then re-reported on March, on March 1st. So that is a projection. We're hoping that number gets a little bit higher, but that's the number we're using for this projection. It's, it's better be safe right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
So circuit breaker, like I touched upon a little bit just now, but this is to mitigate the impact of special ed tuition increase, and, you know, we're, Dr. Spizito's worked very hard to, to make sure that number is, is as robust as possible, and I think that we've done a nice job of increasing that number for FY23, based on the needs and based on the cost that we've incurred this year. So that number is gonna go right back into the budget, and again, we're projecting, that number would be around $350,000 for FY24 as well. And again, we're projecting that number to be around 350,000 per FY24 as well. So, you know, the risk of this though is sustainability, okay? So, you know, unless this formula changes and we increase the percentage that this is funded back to the state, you know, this will be really hard to do year in, year out, okay? Especially if that number of students that we need to tuition out increases. And that's a fluid number, we don't know, any given month or week, we can see that number change, is that number increase. And I just want to be very clear too, and I think that, I hope that everyone on this table understands this, that when we say, we talk about special ed tuition, and we talk about educating our students in either one of these two buildings, or at a collaborative that's 50 miles away, we need to do what's best for our kids. So whether our kid's in one of these physical buildings or 50 miles away, they're our students. So we want to do what's best for those students, and sometimes that means, you know, sending to an expensive collaborative, and that's what we will do. So I just want to be very clear about that. I know that when people see these numbers, sometimes they are taken aback. But these numbers are real, and our students deserve the best education that we can give them. And sometimes that education does not happen with physical plans. So over the last couple of years, and really at the onset of COVID, we started receiving emergency relief funds, or SFR funds, from SFR 1, SFR 2, and SFR 3. And as you can see, these funds increased dramatically over the last three years. SFR 1 was around 65,000, which was spent, I believe, mostly for safety and for equipment that was needed to keep our students faculty safe. SFR 2 and SFR 3 has been used predominantly to offset salaries and other additional costs. And you can see that SFR 3, which is the final of those three rounds of funding, has to be spent by September of 2024. So we have approximately 270,000 left that's been put into the FY24 budget that needs to be used by September of 2024. And that money's gone after that, that money is gone. There's not going to be an SFR 4, SFR 5. So the term you may or may not have heard, the fiscal cliff, that's a real thing. So once these three rounds are done and spent and accounted for, districts will need to figure out how they can close that gap. And that's something that we're talking about now, we're thinking about now, but it'll be even more impactful for FY25. So I just wanted to say that out loud and keep that on everyone's radar as we go through this process. So this is, again, this is kind of what I just talked about, but we will need to continue to have this conversation. SFR 3, as you can see, you know, what's allocated budget for FY24 is being put towards salaries and some additional costs and equipment that is needed for our students and our faculty. So when we put this budget together, like I said, I received a lot of feedback from our valley principals, from our special ed tech, and our buildings and grounds director, and kind of what they feel, what are some possible reallocations? And we have a couple. The first, a couple of them are addressing the critical needs of special education. So what we're looking at, at the high school level, is reallocating one of our paraprofessional positions due to retire, and taking another position which has been unfilled to date, and turning that into a full-time special education teacher for FY24. We're seeing the increased number of students coming to the middle school level in the year of additional supports, indeed, is really at the special education level. We feel that putting another full-time special education teacher with these students, whether it's in the co-teaching model or pull-up classroom, is going to greatly support them more than having a paraprofessional with those students. So that's why this first reallocation took place. And kind of just explaining that at the bottom, but that's essential to the success of our middle school students and as they progress into high school. The next was the reallocation that's utilizing a 1.0 NVES paraprofessional, again, due to retirement, to creating a 0.5 NVES media specialist. Currently, this person was more or less serving this capacity, where they were in the media center of the library, working with students, and having an extra special for these students. We want to maintain that, but we want to do it in a way that this person is on a teacher's contract and is working in the media center, not full-time, but 0.5 at a time, so that we can have another landing spot for our elementary school students. We have some additions, and I think that up until this point, we've talked about kind of maintaining what we have. I know there's, you know, the increases due to inflation, the costs that we cannot control. But we have a couple of additions that I want to share with the community tonight. And the first is the position that we had up until this year. It was a 1.0 full-time media specialist here at the high school. That position has been held by various people over the years, but it's a position that I still feel is extremely impactful for our students. For many school districts and schools, the library is kind of the hub of learning for many students. And it's also something that's required that high schools have by media. We are looking at our decennial accreditation come 2024, and I think it would behoove us to have that position filled with full-time personnel. The second is a district-wide math instructional coach. We've had this position for the first time ever this current year, and that person has done a perceptual job. That position was or is grant-funded. That grant is not being, it's being phased out. Unfortunately, cannot reapply for that grant. But this person has been instrumental in looking at math curriculums for the district and working with our math teachers and increasing their pedigree. So we really feel, I really feel, that this position is something we need to hang on to. We've identified math as kind of a critical area to really put a lot of our resources right now. Looking at some of our test score data, you know, we were, like every district in the Commonwealth, we saw a decrease in test scores post-COVID, but we had some good renewed dimensions already in place. And we feel like that program right now is ahead of where the math instruction was, or is. So to put a 1.0, or keep that 1.0, math instructional coach was really important to us to nominate.
Just so you know, that printout didn't work on this page. The words run off the page.
Okay.
So it's fine on the slide, but it's not here. It goes media center C, or whatever that letter is after.
The semicolon, I think.
No, it's a letter.
It's a R?
Media center R. So that's the, you can see everything from that L straight down.
Okay.
Off this page.
I'll get you back up.
I'm just letting you know so if you hand it up to anybody else.
You guys at Illinois get these special down copies, so good luck. One addition, I'll sign it there. So just some closing thoughts for this kind of overview. And again, the snow and ice analogy, this was in your narrative, and I'll just explain this kind of in real time. I said at the beginning of this meeting, we have a snow day tomorrow. I think it's our third one this year. Every town or city in the Commonwealth has a DPW, I think you do. And every year, they try to project how much money they're going to spend on snow, ice, and salt and sand. We're no different, and that number changes. It's the best estimate, it's maybe, you look at the last three years and try to guess from there. But, you know, we're trying to do the same thing with our special ed tuitions. And it's really tricky to do that. It's really, we need to be very mindful that we have to make sure that we can support every student that is going to be able to public school student, every student. And I just really want to kind of say this out loud, that we need to make sure that, you know, because that number, if that number increases, it continues to increase, we cannot look at, you know, unfunding other parts of our budget. We need to make sure that just because that number is kind of all the place at times or may increase, that other parts of this budget are funded, that we need to make sure that we do it all. So even though it's hard to kind of pinpoint exact cost from year to year, you need to make sure we fund special ed, you need to make sure we fund every other part of our budget to support our students. I will also say this, because a need goes unfunded, doesn't mean we don't need it. Because we can't fund something or something, you know, is in conversation to be eliminated, does not mean we don't need it. We have to prioritize, I have to prioritize what I feel is the best and most impactful for our students. And just because we don't receive it, we don't have the funding for it, does not mean we don't need it. And the last two slides on this presentation, I just want to kind of give you a little bit of insight. It's per people expenditure, and I've had conversations with a couple of you about this over the last couple of months and kind of where we're at. North Brookfield kind of falls right, well, we're in the lower third of the state, all right? We're not in the bare minimum, we're roughly around 17 grand is what we spend per student. Some districts, and you see HALL on the bottom right, is spending right now over 26,000 per student. The state average is a little over 19,000, so it's 2,000 over what we spend per student. Now, I know that it may be a little more nuanced than this, but if you take the number of students we have currently in the district, it's around 440 students, and you take that 2,000, that's over 80,000 that we would have towards this budget, that would greatly close that budget gap. That's if we funded this at the state average. So again, something to think about, and the two graphs that you have in front of you up on the screen here, you have what are called the dark schools, and those are schools that Desi thinks are comparative to North Brookfield. And you have the SWEP collaborative members, which, we're part of SWEP, which is a 17 school district kind of collaborative that serves this whole area of the state. And this is where we fall on those two graphics. The dark schools are kind of at the bottom, again, like I said, and then SWEP are kind of right in the middle, right below Quaybog and right above Quabbe, two of our neighbors. So just some more kind of food for thought, some more numbers to look at. I know that this will be the first of many conversations, but this was a 35,000-foot overview of the budget. I think that what it speaks to is what our students need, what our students deserve, and I think what, you know, our faculty wants to provide for our students. So I think this is really where we start our conversation.
So, you know, but I'm going to guess if we do have questions, we follow up to you to the chairman, I mean, to the superintendent so that we don't do questions going on.
Yes, so that's the thought would be, as you guys are, and obviously tonight, we're not in a position to go through all of these, all this information. You guys have looked at it, there's a lot of numbers. So my thought is, if you have questions that are more specific or focused, because again, we're looking at this from a very high level, send them to me and we'll distribute them. I'll get them to Mr. McCormick, and I think that we need to do that within the next four days. So we have our questions into him by the end of the week. Sooner the better, but I'll put the cutoff as Friday. Get me the questions, and next week, we can get a response out so that we all have that information. And then we can pursue this further. This is a long process, and we're kind of just getting into it right now. The next step, and I invited Mike Zawinski from the Finance Committee tonight just so we can see what we're dealing with here as far as the budget numbers. But the next thing we've got to do is, and I've already reached out to you all about it, is to set up a meeting with the Finance Committee. But I think that this information that we have as a follow-up to this presentation is essential that we have that before we go to that conversation with the Finance Committee. So we have all of our understanding, all of our questions are answered prior to going to engage with them. Welcome to comments. If you have questions on the actual presentation too, by all means, pass it away, but. There's a lot of, a lot of numbers, a lot of graphics.
So there's no, there's no clear word from the state whether or not they'll help offset any of these basically manual increases for these out-of-district placements? Is there any, will there be any relief from the state?
They do that through what's called circuit breaker. That's how they help us offset some of those costs. Now, it doesn't fully offset the, so like I said, it's at 70% right now. Some of our local and state legislators are trying to get that to 90%, but that's not there yet. So it's never, it's not an even trade-off, if you will.
So, so the, that 14% increase, they're not going to give anything commensurate to offset that?
No, I don't know, you know, I can't speak to how they are reworking their formula if they are. That 14%, that's been hard for them to swallow. Like I said, typically, it's 1% to 2% increase, which I think is pretty legitimate. But when you go from 2% to 14%, that's huge.
Any other questions for, right now? All right, thank you again for putting this together. And we will get you those questions by Friday. Now, moving on. Administrators' reports. Who we have here first? Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for everybody.
First is...
This is Griesley.
Yep.
Yep, this is Griesley, it's up first.
Up first, wow, all right, hold on, we're not ready.
Apparently we're not doing the best for last one.
Okay. I had two things I wanted to speak about on my report tonight. One was the kindergarten registration, which is beginning. So we did ask the town to put the information on the sign in the center of town. So look there, hopefully that's up and running. Sorry, my computer's not working a second. I'm just looking for the date, do I have it in my...
May 13.
Thank you, yes. Yep, so Ms. Dresden is collecting registration forms by May 13th. Thank you for having that date. I also wanted to acknowledge the event that we had on the Friday before the break, which was Camp Read a Lot. We were excited to bring that event back as a community event. The year that, after COVID, we did it virtually the first year, and then the second year, we just did it within the classroom, so we weren't, you know, mixing cohorts around the building. So this was our first year of really bringing it back completely, you know, full the way it had been, and classrooms could go from station to station, did different activities that celebrated literacy. I wanted to thank Mr. Shelburne for picking up the organization of that this week, or this, this year. Prior to that, it was Mrs. Pratt that organized it year after year, and so he stepped in and made that happen for our students, so thank you to him. Thank you to all the volunteers that ran the stations, it was such a great event. Kevin Flanders from the Spencer New Leader was there, so that event was featured in the current, in the New Leader last week. So it was really, it was awesome, and our PTO had a pancake breakfast. It was lovely, it was a really fun day, so I wanted to just give him that shout-out. And that's it, I have just a couple things. It's been a good month.
Seems like the school, seems like the school gets one pretty good article per week in the New Leader.
We try, we try. We have Community Reading Day this Thursday, so we'll look forward to our community readers. And then later in April, we'll have our Earth Day event, which is always fun too, so lots to look forward to.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for, all right, so Dr. Esposito, you're next.
Great, thank you. So in the same vein of the circuit breaker, we had an audit this year, and Mr. McCormick and I did a debrief with the auditors, and we did quite well. They were able to go through and they picked out a couple of our students that went through the audit. And we got the report actually today, and whether or not they will have the funds to give us the 14,000 that they saw that we were entitled to. They rarely are giving money to districts, but in this case, they saw that we are entitled to more. They were usually taking money from districts, so this was a positive. So if there's money left over after they finish their audits, we will get that, so that's wonderful. A couple other things, we have Nurse Maureen and Nikki Smith. They are doing their eighth annual wellness competition. And this is to promote the health and wellness of our staff, teaching healthy eating, exercise, making good choices. So it's just team building in our school with our staff, and everyone has a good time. And then just some highlights within our schools, our... And then just some highlights within our schools, our adjustment counselors, they have drop-in lunch, and in the elementary, they're doing the lunch bunch where students come together and they eat, and they're, and Ms. Mack reads a book, and they learn different lessons, whether it's perspective-taking, intertaking, and how to be a good friend. So those two things, both at different, approaching the same topics but at different levels. So glad to see that's up and running in age appropriate in both buildings, so those are just some of the things I want to highlight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The money that's missing, is that from this year?
Yes.
So that's money for this fiscal year?
Yes. And again, with the disclaimer that if they have the money, they will send it, they will add it.
Take money from other districts, they should certainly, that $14,000 is not.
Yeah, it's not bad. It was nice.
So last but not least, Dr. Boon, is the high school up there, please?
Olivia really captured it right, I'll tell you, it's an exciting time to be at the high school this year. Our sports teams have distinguished themselves, in my opinion. The boys' basketball team came within a year's breadth of qualifying for the tourney, but they missed out, but I'm very proud of all of them. The group of students who also stung out are those who participated in student government, and they have done a number of things this year, but nothing that stood out more than this idea of Unity Week, and I thought it was great. And like the cheerleaders, the basketball team, the pep band, they all contribute to the positive learning climate of North Forkfield Junior Senior High School. And tonight's report recognizes many of the events and accomplishments of those students, in fact, during a very short month. I attended with Mr. McCormick, National Honor Society, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony, it was conducted on junior 24th. It was wonderful and heartwarming to see parents recognize their own children to have such success and meet such a high standard. The rocketry club captivated everyone in the cafeteria at lunch when they demonstrated the capacity to fire a rocket, which was included in my newsletter, and that was exciting. It was pretty cool. The themes, Olivia had spoken to for Unity Week, were mental health, Disability Awareness Day, American Heart Association Day, Caps for Communists, Show Your Pride Day, and Put Bulling to Bed Day. And I thought this allowed students to express themselves in a variety of ways, hit on themes. Again, Stuco is quite impressive when you stand them next to other student governments from other schools, they are the straw that spurs to bring care to North Forkfield, it's exciting. Also, we took some time to recognize our counselors for National School Counseling Week, which is pretty cool. Student Government, in terms of teaching and learning, attended a presentation by Our Future, which was coordinated by Ms. Channing Ford. And the goal of this organization is to promote student voice through multimedia presentations, and this was exciting to see because there was genuine enthusiasm for this, and we're bringing their representative Bonnie back this week as well. The high school did complete math testing, which will offer data to help inform our instruction, and it'll help us in a way provide a formative as well as a summative baseline to help inform our instruction. We continue during our professional development and collaboration time to articulate and map the curriculum as a faculty, and we made progress both last month and today towards articulating our portrait of a graduate as to what are the standards and the parameters we have to meet to graduate from North Forkfield, and what skills and qualities do we want to display. And one of the things, and I give the faculty a lot of credit here, is we were right with this fact that let's have all the same parameters in the portrait for a graduate, but let's define it differently every two grades. So grade seven and eight, how is that seen in the eyes of seventh and eighth graders? Grades nine and 10, what defines that for those students? And then grades 11 and 12, what then defines those qualities or skills there? Because after all, analysis for a seventh grader might by and large be different than that of a 12th grader, certainly. So we want to consider that. So we worked on that today, and I'm pretty happy, and I want to thank some of the colleagues on the end of this roof, but also the network of colleagues we consulted to try to be informed about this. So it's kind of exciting. And then we want to continue as a faculty to utilize common planning time. And most recently, in terms of common planning time, I intended the math coach working with the math teachers at the high school level to try to all get on the same page and be reflective in our practice. And I'm very proud of the school, I know you are as well, and as always, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Old business, it's not on here, we still have a lingering old business item that was the creation of an exit survey. And I know previously our two other members, two former members were working on that. We've never really come to a conclusion on who's going to take charge of that, and it's something that I think about every time I see one of these meetings coming up. So I would like, I don't know what the proper motion would be for something like this, but do we have?
Technical issues discussion, then appoint people to it. I mean, I certainly would talk.
Yeah, I would, if you, I can appoint you to be in charge of this. I would say maybe reach out to me if you're willing to volunteer. I'm not going to put you guys on the spot right now, but maybe as you're going through questions on this, let me know. I'd like to get two people together so that we can talk about what this exit interview, exit survey is that we want to have, and especially as we're approaching the end of the school year, that's when we see the biggest shuffle in the demographics of the school, so. By all means, I'm not going to put anyone on the spot, but.
I said that I wanted to be on it, so.
Okay, so maybe we'd like to work with Tony on it.
I would like to work with me.
Please let me know, and I'll get that appointed, so we can take that off of the old business. Another thing that we got to notice, which Rod, I'm relying on you to help me remember this, because my brain's not top-notch today. This is for the, what's it called? This is the smallest, I was going to say.
Virtual schools.
Yeah, the virtual schools. So I can't remember if it was, I believe it was last spring, but I thought it was last fall, we'd already decided on this, but we have to vote annually to restrict enrollment, to cap enrollment at 1%. And I don't remember when exactly we voted on that last. I felt like it was in the fall, but.
I believe it's in the fall.
Can you explain that a little?
So there's virtual schools, there's online virtual schools, and.
And that's through the district or when you homeschool?
It's a, it's really, it's like a, it's like a online school, basically, that.
So if somebody wanted to take Mandarin, we don't offer them.
Oh, I see, okay.
They can do that.
Okay. It's like a subscription-ish type?
It's if a student wants to go to like a Teka Academy, which is an online virtual school.
So but that's from homeschool?
Yeah, it's a online work class, it's a whole.
So it's, okay, so it's a homeschool?
So it's not, yeah, you're schooling at home, but it's virtual, it's kind of like remote learning from home. So we vote annually to cap that, if we want to, we can cap it at 1%. And what we did last time, we voted on it, we had a discussion about, about anyone that's already enrolled in it is in there, it's just if you get three kids that want to do this and you already have that 1% cap, we don't have to, we can vote to restrict that, so.
So I have more questions, and maybe Mr. McCormick, you're the one to ask. So if someone comes to you and says they want to homeschool, they have to ask for your approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so if they say, I'm going to use Teka, or, oh, I can't think of the other names, but then you can say that you don't accept that, because if you're over the 1% cap, you can say, no, you can't do that, you can homeschool a different way?
Yeah, so most students who homeschool do that, like they do it on their own.
Right.
The parents or families who provide the curriculum for their students, Teka, or it used to be Greenfield Virtual, and there's a couple others that students can use, they have to enroll, they have to be admitted to that or enrolled in that school first, and then they can withdraw from a public school. What this is saying, that if we enact this 1% rule, that based on our current enrollment, roughly around five, six students, five students, that would be the cap that we would allow to enroll in an online virtual school.
And if you're over the cap, then that family has to choose a different way to educate if it decides to homeschool?
Yes.
So this does say that the vote has to be taken by March 1st, and the results have to be reported in the Department of Education by March. So my guess is we probably voted on it just before the March 1st, then that was changed.
That's my guess.
I feel like we talked about it in the fall too, but.
No, we probably did talk about it.
It definitely feels like a fall thing, right at the start of the school year, I thought we were talking about Valley View and the other stuff, we had a couple of housekeeping items. I started looking through in the old minutes, and I didn't get through where I could see that we did that.
He did, well, in the spring, because I don't have those kinds of.
It was on the spring?
I think so.
Okay. So we would need to vote on this item as to whether we continue with the 1% cap.
So I make the motion we continue with the 1% cap.
I'll second that motion.
Now we can.
Hey, you can discuss if anybody has a question.
So I have another question. What is the harm in having more than 1%? Like, why do you have to vote a percentage?
Well, the Department of Revenue requires us to vote 1%.
The Department of Revenue?
I mean, Department of Education.
Oh. Then we, you have to pick a number? And so where did the 1% number come from?
So it looks to me like from this, that that's typical for districts to give 1% based on that.
And you're saying five children is 1% of our district?
Four point four children.
That'd be weird.
Just a little.
Okay.
And that, of course, would be with the same prerequisite that we had before, where anyone that's in is already enrolled in that, so it's, you know, we're not going to boost all the others.
It's 1% of new.
1% of new, oh. Do you know the percentage we have right now?
It's less than 1%. I think, I have to talk to dark school, but I think there might be a couple students right now enrolled in Teka, but I'm not, I'm not even sure about that. That number's gone down, I think the last couple.
Since COVID, yeah.
Is that solely for homeschool kids, or is that, or can that be students who are trying to take extra, get extra credit, like if they're?
No, so I think that there was some confusion about that, Rod mentioned like taking a one-off Mandarin class, that's not what this is, that would be a dual enrollment or an ingenuity class. This is if you want to enroll your student in a full-time virtual high school or a virtual
Any other discussion? All in favor of maintaining the cap at 1%?
John, do you raise your hand?
Okay. That is all we have for new business. I don't think we have any need for an executive session tonight.
Make the motion for adjournment.
Second motion.
All in favor of adjournment?
So I'm looking through the 2022-04.